All the forthcoming work sessions are ordered, please, now, clerk, would you read the role?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hurt.
Motion for the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. We're here today for a work session to discuss our 2016 CIP request. Noel, you want to kick us off, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for being here. Today, we're going to talk about the capital improvements program, kind of talk about what it is, why we do it, the process that we follow, how it relates to the budget and the bonding for the year, and then have any questions from council. You can see several of the department heads are here that received funding through the CIP for their projects, so they're here to answer questions as well. I'll just kind of begin with the past several months, we've been working with the various departments for the city of Waterloo for their capital improvement program requests. The capital improvement program itself is a five-year plan that we update annually. The reason we update it annually, even though it's a five-year plan, is things change year to year. A new project may come forward, one project may fall back because of some delays or something, or just a change in philosophy. So again, we update it every year to kind of see what the priorities are, department by department, as well as the overall city goals of seeing things done. The past several years, we've had a larger, I think, dedication to some infrastructure needs, drainageway improvements, and that continued in this current one as well. What you have before you is a summary sheet, department by department, of what the departments have requested for projects and what has been recommended. We had an $8 million goal for the total for this year for the CIP, and so we worked with the various departments. I think we started out at about $16 million in requests and then worked through those. When we're working with the departments, back and forth on trying to find out what happens, we meet with all of them, go through each project, describe their existing bond funds. And Michelle, if she makes it up here, can just discuss that a little bit about how much bond funds we currently have over the last five years that are still either underway or waiting to be used. But we discuss with their existing bond funds, their existing projects they have going on, their priorities for their projects, and long-term needs as well as it applies to this. The projects in front of you, as you go sheet by sheet as well, each department marks them high, medium, and low. A lot of them mark, several of them as high, but then they'll also rank them high one or high two. So again, you can see what they have for their priorities based on what they need for their department, or based on what the council and mayor input has been to them to get things done. As we go through and work with them, we look at a number of different things in terms of how much work can possibly be done in a given year, if the project can be broken out in terms of design in one year, then construction in another year. So again, we're trying to set it up so that the amount of funding available in a given year is ready to be spent in that upcoming year, as well as spending past amounts of bond funds that are available. After we meet with all the departments, I'm just waiting for Michelle to sit down. After we meet with all the departments, we again meet as a group. It's the mayor, Michelle, myself, and Shane Graham from my staff. Shane does all the compiling of all the information and all the Excel work in terms of figuring out where we're at and adding things up, as well as his input for the projects. We meet with all the departments, go through that again then to find, kind of go back and look at priorities. Finally, we will send it out to the departments as to, you know, a certain amount for the department. The department heads then again have a one last say as to how they want to rearrange the money on their particular amount, their total, but they may want to switch it, you know, Paul may want to switch it from part maintenance equipment to golf maintenance equipment or something like that from line by line, similar to a budget where you'd switch the lines. So that's where we're at today, is we have basically gone back to the departments to give them their totals. They've come back on these sheets in front of you with where they think that that funds would be spent in the most wise fashion for the city. So those are the sheets you have before you today. Michelle's now here, just to have her jump into it. Michelle can kind of give you a little bit of a relationship between the CIP and how that relates to the bonding and existing bond funds.
Michelle Weedner, CFO. I'm not sure if there were specific questions or just general. Okay. So when we set the debt service budget, we have to repay the next fiscal year's interest and related principal on any bonds we issue. We've done that. We've assumed the $8 million for general purposes and $6 million for sewer purposes, and those, the estimated amounts it would take to pay back the next year's principal and interest payments have been incorporated in the budget that you've already approved. In terms of existing bond money, we have quite a bit that departments have that they haven't spent yet, so that's one thing about issuing more bonds. Departments need to get their existing money spent in order to get more. There are specific rules by the Internal Revenue Service that we have to pay, I won't even call it a penalty, but if we earn interest on the bond money sitting in the bank before a person, a department uses it for the appropriate purpose, it's possible that we would have to send a check to the IRS. We have to pay a consultant to go through and do that testing. If we don't have to do that because we spend all our money in a couple of years, that would be a good thing. But departments have to balance their needs with how much they can actually get done in a year because we're limited by how much staff we have and time we have to supervise projects to, in addition to what they would like to have done or need to get done. And that's something I think we all need to keep in mind. Our stomachs are often, our eyes are often bigger than our stomachs, is an example I would use. So I think from there, probably entertain questions, or I don't know what you are going to do next, Noel. Okay.
Counsel, do you have questions regarding the CIP, the process, the amounts? Anything? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, Michelle, if I could just ask you maybe to expand upon what you just talked about, because the sheets we just got kind of cut off at 15, and so you're talking about bonds prior to 15. Correct. And I mean, I just, I guess I want to get a little bit better.
These worksheets are the capital improvements program, the proposed projects that will be worked on over the next five years. And if I, well, looking at this, I'm quite sure, the years, the future years, 17, 18, 19, and should be 20 on there, those have not been reduced yet to what we would estimate bonds to sell. So for future years, this is simply what departments are asking for. I don't believe we will sell that much in any of those years because several reasons. I don't think the departments can get that much work done even if they wanted to. I don't think that we can afford to pay it back that quickly, and it just, it just doesn't fit within the budgets.
Well, and I guess my question was that you mentioned just a little bit ago about we have more bonds issued than we're able to get work done for if I understood you correctly.
Right. We still have a substantial sum of money.
So could you expand upon that a little bit about why we, if we've got, if we've got the money available, why do we not spend it? Why do we not get stuff done?
I think you would need to ask each of the departments. There's lots of reasons specific projects get held up. Huge amount of that is due to weather, a lot, you know, and we all saw, I don't know, trying to think of an example. For one thing, honestly, we're still picking up from prior floods. We really had a slowdown after 2008 floods, and a lot of our construction energies went to repairing things that were funded with grants. So the projects that we were going to fund, the projects still needed to get done, and they're still on the books, but the work didn't get done because of, first of all, couldn't do it because it was raining, and then our energies were focused elsewhere for a while. I think we're finally starting to work through that. But all those bonds that are sold have projects assigned to them. Those aren't the projects you're seeing on here. Those are already over here in another pool being worked on.
So typically, those projects would be construction-related, is what you're saying?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. The whole capital improvement program and bonds, it's capital. We don't issue bonds. These are not, this isn't like taking your credit card and paying for dinner out. We don't pay for operating expenses as, with bond money. This is for, I, sometimes there are repairs in here, I think, that some people would like us to pay for with operating money, which would be great if we had it. We don't always have enough. So these are capital-type expenditures only.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lynn. Michelle. I understand requested and approved. What's the first column, then?
That is what planning approved for this year, last year. So last year, when they expanded it to the full five years, this is what they expected to do this year. And then departments turned in new requests for this year, and then they've reduced it to what they feel the priorities are.
And are we still basically borrowing $8 million and paying $8 million about?
In general, it's hard, I'm going to use the word "general" twice, but for general property tax-funded projects, yes. There will be a couple of differences. Sewer now, we're jumping up to $6 million. So our sewer debt's going to grow for a while, and as we've all talked about a number of times, there are a number of very important reasons we have to do that. So sewer debt will be growing, which is going to force our total debt to grow. The other thing that could impact that, and it's not in here at this time, is borrowing for, that we've kind of agreed to do for economic development projects, and the largest one would be the tech works at this time. So that, that may be in another hearing, but since that's kind of a separate issue, I do not have it incorporated into these dollars.
Is, but the sewer bonds, they're paid by?
Sewer user fees, yes. Yep.
But the $8 million is property taxes?
For the most part. It's not completely. We will use TIF revenue, and while that's property taxes, it's kind of a different category of property taxes, so we'll use that. There's a little bit of hotel motel tax and a few other sources that we have that go into it. But the $8 million is primarily repaid with property tax. That's an accurate statement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions of Michelle or Noel about the process?
Mayor, just to comment.
I'm sorry?
Just a moment.
Oh, Mr. Welper, yes.
I'd say, Mr. Morrissey and I sat through all the, all the requests, and the $16 million, you could have filled every one of them, they were all really legitimate requests, stuff that we need to whittle it down to the $8 million as a, as a project in itself. So I really appreciate what Noel and Shane did, and everyone else that's worked on this.
Very good. Thank you for those kind words.
And Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
And Noel and Shane, thank you for allowing me to be part of that and participate in that, and I hope I can get invited back next year.
Did you do anything that wouldn't get you invited back?
Did you write a thank you note?
We'll see you in the next year.
Yeah? Did you bring cookies or anything?
No, and I didn't bring an apple either.
Further questions?
Motion for adjournment.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We adjourn.
Boards and Commissions Committee meeting to order. Mayor Secretary, if you agree to the role, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
And Mr. Hurt is absent, so Ms. Cole.
Here. Motion for the agenda.
Second.
No motion and a second for the agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. If one of you two would like to take that item.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file Mayor Clark's recommendation for the following appointments. Mr. Jerome Amos to the Boards and Commissions Civil Service Commission with an expiration date of 4/13/2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that recommendation. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That item is approved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn. Thank you.
Call the Finance Committee meeting to order.
Madam Cole.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion approved, the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of April 13.
Second.
Motion, second discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take the travel requests.
Thank you so much.
First, we have Steve Carey, instructor and a possible second instructor for the confined space rescue class meeting in Albert City, Iowa, May 12 through the 14th, at an amount not to exceed $556. Next, we have Tajah Wright, Housing Coordinator for the HCV Housing Quality Standards Training in Des Moines, Iowa, June 16 through the 18th, at an amount not to exceed $1,465.50. And then we also have a refund request by the estate of Christine Deeds in the amount of $472.50 for garbage fees paid on a vacant home located at 610 Magnolia Parkway. And finally, a refund request in the amount of $5,173.62 for sewer charges billed in air on a deduct meter at International Paper Warehouse located at 800 West Parker Street. I move, do we approve those four items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Pre-outs?
Yes, sir.
Leisure services, not to exceed $4,000 for production of television commercials and airing commercials for all three municipal golf courses. Leisure services, $4,529 for chemical and fertilizer for turf management in downtown area. Leisure services, $9,100 for sidewalk and patio at Tennis Center. Leisure services, $2,429.8 for lifeguard suits, whistles, lanyards for leisure services, lifeguards. Leisure services, not to exceed $3,000 for lion striping of Riverfront Stadium parking lot. Leisure services, not to exceed $2,400 for additional baseball paint, or pants and socks for increased enrollment in youth baseball and softball. Leisure services, $11,500 for seal coating parking lot at Riverfront Stadium. Leisure services, $3,600 for one 560 SS hot seat pressure washer to replace approximately 15-year-old unit. $900 trade-in value is offered on old unit. Leisure services, $1,388.75 for clay and chalk for baseball soft, baseball softball fields. Parking maintenance, $8,326.48 plus $150 shipping and handling for double POM meters, four single meters, 10 decorative posts and bases. Planning, $2,000 for plat of survey legal description for .51 acres near ConAgra and FedEx sites. Traffic operations, $3,474 for labor and materials for sidewalk ramp.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Yes, sir.
I just have one question for Sandy on the parking maintenance for those parking meters. Can I ask where are those going to be going, Sandy?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent Traffic Operations. Those are going to be going over on West Fifth Street and Commercial where new sidewalk has been put in by the bank, Wells Fargo. All of our old meters were taken out, so instead of putting the old ones back in, we're going to put the new ones in.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I move that we approve the Budget Line Item Amendment six through nine. Copies are on file in Ms. Share's office. And also that we pay the bills this week, which are $3,711,437.49, 3,711,437.49.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time. We are adjourned.
I've got 5:30. It's time to get our meeting started, so welcome to all of you that are in our audience tonight to this regularly scheduled April 20 meeting of the Waterloo City Council. Madam Clerk, would you start us by reading the role, please?
Certainly. Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hurt.
And if you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection of prayer, please. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Ms. Carolyn Cole, our ward to council member. Ms. Cole, please.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I have a seat?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of April 13, 2015, regular session as proposed.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the minutes from last session or the agenda?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a couple of items we need to take care of tonight. First of all, we have a proclamation for Proclaiming Arbor Week, and our own Paul Hudding is going to step forward. So Paul, if you'd come forward, we'll get started with that. Seems appropriate as we're, or maybe inappropriate, that we're cutting a bunch of trees down and talking about Arbor Day, but anyway, good to see you. This is the City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas trees provide a pleasing environment in Waterloo for the benefit of our residents and visitors, contributing greatly to our positive image, and whereas the optimum reforestation of Waterloo will require public participation and cooperation, resulting in an attractive community, and whereas the management of trees increases the benefit to our community through planning, planting, maintenance, timely removal, and replacement, and whereas the Iowa legislature has designated the last Friday in April as Arbor Day throughout Iowa. Now therefore, I buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 19 through the 25th as Arbor Week in Waterloo, Iowa, and encourage all citizens of Waterloo to celebrate this occasion and the beauty of our city by planting a tree. Paul, I'm going to give that to you, and I'm assuming you want to say a couple of things about trees.
Just a few things.
Okay.
First of all, on behalf of Ted Gierfield, our City Forester, I want to thank you and the council for your ongoing support for our urban forestry program in Waterloo. And yes, the Emerald Ash War has been a tremendous strain, and again, thank you for stepping up to help us take care of that issue. But I'm going to talk a little bit about tree planting, because this is Arbor Day. April 24, as you know, Mayor, at 9:00 a.m., East High School's ELS, which is Expanded Learning Seminar class, will be planting a tree, and the mayor will be present to read the Arbor Day proclamation. That's going to be at Sullivan Park, 9:00 a.m. May 6, Sacred Heart students will be planting a tree at Prairie Grove Park, and then a number of other events. April 30, we have our tree distribution at Burns Park, and this is through Mid-America's Plant Some Shade Program. There are a few trees still available. The pickup will be 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Burns Park Leisure Services Office, and if there are some left, you can pick them up that day. Most of them have been pre-purchased. Couple other tree planting projects. We have 68 trees that will be planted at Gates Park. You know, we've moved a lot of trees to Gates Park. And we have 12 trees to be planted downtown near the Sportsplex, and nine trees at Helman Field adjacent to Cunningham School. So again, thanks for your support, counsel. Thanks for the support.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. We have a really cool Uh, we have a really cool thing tonight, ladies and gentlemen. This isn't a proclamation, but it's a certificate of appreciation. And I want Pastor Scott to come up, please, and bring all of your folks with you that that you have, uh, um, that you have with you tonight. Uh, just come on up.
I'll stay in the back.
Come on up, guys. What let's do is let's kind of, everybody fill in around here. I'm going to get kind of right in the middle, and then everybody get on either side of me and, and just come on. We're going to have to squeeze in, but that's a good thing. And maybe we can get the young'uns up front and the taller people in the back, so that everybody can see everybody. There we go. Oh, this is great. Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Okay, you are of the tall variety. Good job. I think I'm the, I'm the, I'm the thorn amongst, a whole bunch of roses here, but, and, and, and Councilman Welper. But ladies, that is a good thing. Uh, Pastor Scott, I'm going to give you a microphone in just a minute, and I want you to tell us who these folks are. But I'm going to, I'm going to feebly attempt to begin. Uh, this group are the Shadow Boxers. Is that correct? Uh, and I'm going to, again, I'm going to let you tell folks where you're from and how this all got started. But the reason that we're recognizing them today and reading this certificate of appreciation is for a particular, uh, really good deed that this group did, is it last week or two weeks ago, right? Two weeks ago, at the old Dunsmore House up on Logan Avenue. Uh, Councilman Welper has undertaken that house as, as a project and is really working with a lot of volunteer organizations to, uh, get that old fence taken down and to get the house fixed up and to try to make something of that. But the grounds were kind of a mess, quite honestly. And this group of young people and some older people stepped up and, and, and took a day and went to the Dunsmore House and just did an incredible job of cleaning that place up, raking and getting leaves and sticks and so forth. So anyway, I'm going to read this, and then I'm going to give the microphone here to, to Pastor Scott. Certificate of appreciation presented to the Shadow Boxers by the City of Waterloo, Iowa, on this 20th day of April, 2015, in recognition of your commitment for a better Waterloo by selflessly volunteering to clean up the Dunsmore House property at Logan Avenue and Conger Street. So I'm going to give this to you, and then I'm going to give you the microphone, so that you can kind of tell us, and you got to hold it close and talk right into it, please. There we go. Talk loud.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you Congressman, Councilman Welper.
Yeah. He tried that, it didn't work.
In June of 2008, God gave me a vision that youth in our community needed role models, and what greater place to start than at home? Shadow Boxers was birthed by the vision God gave me, that if children could go out and do something, youth could go out and do something in the community productive, they needed to have their parents by their side. Thus the reason a child will always copy what their parent will do. So thus Shadow Boxers, because children always walk in the shadows of their parents. So if the parent is doing something good and giving back to the community, the youth would be by their side to work with them. So all the youth here are represented by the adults, their parents, or their guardians. And we offer services to rake leaves, wash windows, do laundry. And when Perry Goodman called us about this project for the Dunsmore House, we jumped at it. And we are honored that we reaped from this community, whatever we, good we've gotten from the City of Waterloo, we just want to give some good back and tell Waterloo, "Thank you," that we are part of this community.
God bless you, Pastor. Thank you. You want to get a picture out there, though? That's all. Got everybody? Okay.
Now, count three, five. One, two, three.
When we look to our future leaders, guys, they're all right here, so, uh, God bless you guys. Thank you for what you do. Pastor, I will give you my standard caveat, that when we have folks in, you are all welcome to stay for as long as you wish. You can watch the entire council meeting if you'd like. If you don't want to, you're, no, you're not going to offend anybody if you choose to leave. That's fine also. So I just wanted to give you that opportunity. Okay, you're welcome. Okay, that's the really fun stuff. Uh, thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's 1A through B6, and within that are bills payment, which Ms. Cole will read.
The bills this week are $3,711,437.49, 3,711,437.49.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
If I could, I'd like to ask that we take item 1, B, 2, D, and make that a separate item by itself, prime mark.
All right. We will take that off of the consent agenda and make that an agenda following the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Smith. Or, excuse me, Mr. Lamb.
Can we do that same thing for A, 2A, the other liquor license, Ali's Corner?
Sure. Uh, we'll take both of those liquor licenses off of the consent agenda. Are there questions or comments regarding any of the remaining?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, I was, uh, curious, and I asked Julie if she would be able to answer a question regarding, uh, 1B, um, B, 1B, why that, um, is so much when the one above same amount of times looks like is, uh, so much less.
Okay, Julie, can you speak, um, you're there. Would you speak to the, uh, to the amount regarding Taj's training, please?
Yes. Julie Snyder, Housing Authority Director. Um, this is a required training and a certification exam, um, presented by NAN McKay, which is the training organization we use for Housing Authority. Um, the training and exam itself is almost a thousand dollars, and the balance is for two nights hotel and meals.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments regarding the consent agenda, other than those two that will take off? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. Those, uh, the consent agenda passes. Uh, let's take 2A, Ali's Corner, number two on itself.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Smith.
We, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to point out to you that we have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do. And I just was looking at. Darn it. And he's a good friend, Jerome Amos. Jerome, stand up for us. Thank you, Steve. Uh, Jerome is, uh, being appointed tonight to our boards and commissions to the Civil Service Commission. Uh, and Jerome, that's an important board. I mean, all of our boards are important, but our Civil Service Commission is a very important board. Uh, you have a lot to do with all the folks that work for the city, and I've known Jerome for a while, and I imagine your wife now, since you retired, probably wants you out of the house a little bit, so maybe you can spend some time.
My wife is saying, "When are you going to learn to say no?"
Anyway, uh, i- it's a great, uh, it's a great relationship. You'll do a great job, and, and thank you for not saying no. Thank you for stepping up and serving on this very important board without volunteering. And thank you, Steve, for, I've got his name circled. I've got a note over here that says Jerome's going to be present, and I didn't, but anyway, good to see you again, Jerome. Uh, very good. Uh, item A, please. Ali's Corner, number two, 200 Broadway. Somebody would like to make a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
Um, I guess what the motion is to approve a new application for Ali's Corner, number two, 200 Broadway Street, which includes Sunday, Class B wine, C beer, E liquor.
Second.
Expiration date is 3/24/16. There's been a motion and second. Counsel, comments on this, uh, this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lamb.
Um, with the, with the problems we're having on Broadway Street lately, why would we want a new, um, liquor license? Or is that because of change in ownership or something?
This particular one is a, is a new owner. Uh, it's an established store. It hasn't been closed longer than the allotted time in the overlay district, and it's a new owner requesting the license, but that is why it's coming to us.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, um, I've had, um, different people call me from the neighborhood there that are extremely upset over the, the gunshots and that in that specific area over there. And, um, uh, since being on council, I've heard that rather, um, regularly, um, as to why there are so many, and it seems to be a proliferation of, uh, places to get liquor over in the area there, including, e- every now and then the statements that people still are selling, although there's no proven, uh, of this, uh, through the windows and that. But, um, uh, I'm going to vote no on this, um, as well as on the Prime Mart. Uh, I believe the neighbors in that area want those, um, liquor, um, places, um, to stop selling liquor. So that's why I'm going to vote no.
Further comment?
Mr. Smith?
Is this the, the former Kentucky Fried?
Yes, it is.
And is there a, I know there's a history there with the drive-up window that was resolved. Um, has there been a history in that particular facility? I guess I'm not aware.
I'll defer to, to Director Trelka. I checked on that this morning. Uh, we have very few calls to that area, and the, uh, the liquor window issue, as far as I know, has been resolved. Trelka, uh, Mr. Trelka, do you have anything other than that?
No.
Okay. Do you agree with the fact that there's been very few calls to that location?
Dan Trelka, Director of Safety Services, that's correct. There have not been many calls to that location.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Jones.
Is there any legal basis to, to deny either of these?
I was just about to, uh, just state my standard admonishment, since all of you have mostly heard it, that, uh, Mr. Morrissey's statements were all true and all valid. However, we don't have any legitimate legal basis to deny a liquor license at that location. So I will let you vote your conscience. Further comments? Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call vote on this, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
I hear the motion carries. Uh, we're now going to take up, uh, item D, 2D. Uh, someone would make a motion on that, please.
Mr. Mayor, that would be a motion to approve a, uh, Class E liquor, Class B wine, Class C beer license, uh, for the Prime Mart, 508 Broadway Street, and that is a renewal application. Includes Sunday service with an expiration date of March 31st, 2016.
Second.
Very good. Motion in a second. Uh, let's have a discussion on this item, please.
And on this one, I believe there is a, a history. I believe there's a current history. I believe there's been an ongoing history, unless I'm mistaken, so.
Uh, Mr. Trelka, I asked you to do some investigating on this, please. Could you tell us what you found?
Dan Trelka, Director of Safety Services, there are, uh, several businesses in the area that deal in the sale of liquor. Uh, one's a tavern, two, two are a convenience store-type establishments. Out of those three businesses, this, this actually happens to be the one with the least amount of reports generated. Uh, our experience with this particular establishment is there, there, there is a lot of activity there. It's spill over from another area, and typically it's, uh, employees of the establishment that are calling for the help of the police, based on what they are seeing in the parking lot or inside the business.
Thank you, sir. If they might have any questions.
Is this, is this location one of the most recent episodes?
Yes. On Friday evening, we had a shooting at this business.
Okay. And can you tell me in the last six months or last year, how many specifically to this location we've had?
Uh, in regard to report, police reports written, uh, there have been 22 since January of, uh, 2014. There have been more calls for service, of course, but only 20 to 30% of calls for service result in a report. Uh, and compared to two other businesses, that's the least amount of reports initiated.
Thank you. And it is the police department's recommendation for approval, correct?
Correct. It doesn't meet the threshold for us to deny it.
Thank you. Further questions, Director Trelka? Madam Clerk, let's, uh, yes, sir? Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I, I like again to, to bring up that, uh, the area, this area over here has, uh, seen frequent incidents of, uh, guns going off, uh, where there's been some gun violence, where there's been, um, people injured, um, and in some cases, I believe, fatally. Uh, and the neighbors there are very upset. Uh, some of them are very fearful, and I know that the community wants to see what the city is going to do, uh, about, uh, the gun violence. And to me, there needs to be a, a broad brush, uh, approach to this. It needs to cover everything. And I know that Chief Trelka, uh, gives the statistics, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the businesses that are reporting, but part to me of a broad brush approach to this includes, uh, at least some kind of moratorium or something, if not deny, denial of these liquor licenses. Uh, and it may be even when it comes to the one establishment there that's like a nightclub or that, where there's been a lot of trouble. Even if they're very good, um, owners and that, if trouble, uh, abounds around those, maybe it's time to do away with the liquor so that that's not, and that inviting host there, and just see what happens in that broad brush approach.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Well, I see Mr. Morrissey's point. There's no legal basis to deny these, and we're not here making policy tonight. We're here, um, doing what's, we're legally obligated to do, which is to approve licenses that, um, do not have the recommendation to deny for various reasons, and these do not. So we are under the obligation to approve them, uh, regardless of whether we like what they do or like what we think they do to the neighborhoods or, or not.
A- and, uh, Councilman Jones, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with that, but I agree also that at some point, uh, maybe we have to go, uh, beyond what, um, i- is supposedly dictated to us and take that step, and to confront that issue and to do it in a way that it is, um, addressed in a different manner, even if it means litigation that I believe we win, because as a community, we want to do something about gun violence in our, within our community.
Further comments? Many of you that were on the council, uh, Councilman Morrissey and Councilman Lynn were not. When we went through this a year or so ago, uh, we denied, council denied several liquor applications for this very same reason. They were, they all have, uh, Pat, just for your information, they all have the ability to appeal. They keep their license during their appeal process, and we lost every single one of them. Every license that we denied was eventually granted by the state. Uh, and I'm quite sure that that would be the case here. Having said that, it is the council's option to vote, is your conscience. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, somebody's going to, this was a motion to approve, and it's a tie.
Fails.
Does it fail? Okay, the motion fails. Uh, there we go. Let's move on to item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the 2015 lift stations and complaint mowings with complaint snow remotes.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number two, the lift stations and mowing, uh, snow removals?
Never had.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against our contract for the 2015 lift stations and complaint mowings and complaint snow removal contract? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Uh, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of bid documents, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, for the 2015 lift stations and complaint mowings with complaint snow remotes.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. And that is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Waste Management Services for review.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we had two bids on this item from B&amp;B Lawn Care and from Hopley, Robert Hopley. They're kind of, do you want to read them or do you want them just to be on file? There's several options to these. Can I say that? Okay, it appears as that Robert Hopley has won the bid with the lowest of all of the options. The bids will all be on file in the clerk's office and who gets this? This is Larry Smith, will, already taken a look at it and everything's okay. So Hopley gets the contract. Okay. They'll be on file in the clerk's office if he'd like to see all the options. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on an ordinance approving the request by the city of Waterloo to vacate a portion of the existing 20-foot wide alley located adjacent to lots 1, 2, 9, and 10 within block 16 of the Hayes Edition generally located northeast of Blackhawk Street and northwest of West 17th Street and rescinding ordinance number 5266.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file?
Never had.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number three on our agenda tonight? A second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the planning and programming and zoning commission.
Second. Okay, council, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request to vacate a portion of the existing 20-foot wide alley located adjacent to lots 1, 2, 9, and 10 within block 16 of Hayes Edition.
Second. Madam Clerk, please, that's a roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Item number four, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Welper.
Number four is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of a public hearing as for the development agreement with Three Little Lambs LLC to authorize the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located northwest of 1907 Blackhawk Street for $1 and rescinding resolution number 2015-155.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to number four?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number four, the development agreement for 1907 Blackhawk Street? A second time. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second. Council, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Three Little Lambs LLC to authorize and sell the conveyance of city-owned property located northwest of 1909 Blackhawk Street for $1, rescinding resolution number 2015-155 and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Just to correct the record, it's 1907, not 1909.
What did I say?
You said 1909.
Oh, it was close.
It was close, yeah. I'm sure the record will reflect 1907. It's a roll call vote, madam clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Item number five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing on 2015 stump removal project.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file?
Never had.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against our contract for the 2015 stump removal project? Second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Council, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Thanks.
Sorry, left you hanging there.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, we had three bidders.
The first bid was from Withem Auto Center from Waterloo, Iowa. The bid amount was for $50,744 each, 50,744.00. The second bid was also from Withem Auto Center of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount was for $51,844, 51,844.00. And the final bid was from Bill Colwell of Hudson, Iowa, for $50,383, 50,383.00.
Thank you, madam clerk. Item seven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing on the fiscal year 2016, one-year action plan for community development, block grant, and home program funds for the Waterloo Cedar Falls Home Consortium.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file?
There are several written objections.
Okay, there are several written objections on file to this and it, the hearing is now open, so there's, it's also time if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this item and all of those items involving this item, can please come to the microphone? Yes, ma'am. Just give us your name and your address, please, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Tricia King, Ivy, Nito, 522 Mulberry Street. I usually give a statistical report. This is, we served almost double the number of people we usually serve, so it was, plus I was ill, it took a little, it's taken a little longer. But we served almost 4,000 people last year and I just wanted to give that bit of information to the council and all that. And we also had more people that were returning to work, so we gave out almost 2,000 bus tickets and 20 gas cards in order to, and clothing for people to wear to go to work. So that should make you happy. But I just want to ask if there were any other questions concerning, since I have not been able to report the information like I usually do.
Counsel, do you have any questions of Ms. King? Ms. King, it makes me happy that you have been able to serve so many people. It makes me sad that you have to serve so many people. But God bless you for what you do. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Okay. Just give us your name and your address, please.
I'm Cindy Moore. I'm the executive director of the YWCA at 425 Lafayette Street in Waterloo. And I just wanted to thank everyone for their consideration of our application. This is something we don't do very often and we greatly appreciate the help that we're going to get with our pool stairs.
Thank you, Cindy, very much. And I had the distinct pleasure, just as long as Cindy is here, to go over this morning and tour the Y and look at the work that's been done over the YW this morning and take a look and see what you guys are doing over there. And as I told Cindy and Tanya this morning, what you've done so far is incredible. It's not real visible and it's not real sexy because you can't see it, but all of the mechanicals have been done, there's no heating, new cooling, there's a new roof, there's lots of stuff internally that's been done and we don't do enough, I don't do enough to give the YWCA credit for all of the good work that you do in the city. And I will change that and thank you guys for what you do in the city. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Barb Grant with Operation Threshold, 1535 Lafayette. And I wanted to thank you for, ideally in advance, for your support and your past support for both our weatherization plus program and tenant-based rental assistance. Weatherization plus, we would go in and make a home more energy efficient, but there's problems with the house and so we need other resources to fix the house so that we can, you know, lots of times it's a roof leak or some sort of water issue. So if we insulated it and we didn't address the water problem, then the insulation would for both our weatherization plus program and tenant-based rental assistance. Weatherization plus, we would go in and make a home more energy efficient, but there's problems with the house. And so we need other resources to fix the house so that we can, you know, lots of times it's a roof leak or some sort of water issue. So if we insulated it and we didn't address the water problem, then insulation would get ruined. And so, and then we also do tenant-based rental assistance and have applied for that. And while there's all, there are big needs of homeowners, there are also big renters' needs. And so I wanted to see if you had any questions and encourage you to support.
Does anybody have questions of Barbara from Operation Threshold? Thanks, Barb.
Thanks.
Thank you for the good work you do also. How's the new building working out?
It's great.
Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Just let me make sure there's no other input from the audience and then we'll go to council comments. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, counsel, Mr. Morrissey?
Dewey Clop.
No, let's go ahead and take, let's take comments.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
As you know, I'm going to ask that we move about $5,500 from the single-family rehabilitation line item over to the permanent pool stairs at the YWCA. And therefore, I'm going to vote against this motion and make the motion to move that money.
Thanks, Tom. And I'm aware of that. And as we've discussed procedurally, we have to dispose of or handle or address the agenda item that was submitted to us by that board. So we will take further comments, if you'd like, on this at this time, or we can just deal with this and then you can make your motion after this one is taken. Is there anyone else that has comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, same as aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution approving proposed funding recommendations set forward by the Community Development Board for the fiscal year 2016 One Year Action Plan for CDBG and Home Program Funds for Waterloo Cedar Falls Home Consortium.
Second. And that is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welber?
No.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Okay. That motion fails as offered. Is there further? Mr. Lynn?
Can I make?
Yes, you may. Make the motion that you'd like to make.
I want to adopt a resolution approving the proposed funding recommendations set forward by the Community Development Board for fiscal year 2016 One Year Action Plan for CDBG and Home Program Funds for the Waterloo Cedar Falls Home Consortium with the small change of moving $5,500 from the single-family rehabilitation line item, which is the amount of $450,000, to the YWCA of Blackaw County Permanent Stairs project, which will increase that from $9,500 to $15,000.
Second. Very good. Motion and second on that. Comments or discussion on this item? Is it necessary? Ms. Cole?
I would just like to say that I will support Mr. Lynn's motion, but I also want to thank the CDBG Board for all the work they do in coming up with these allocations. And we have diminishing resources every year and many want, so thank you to them.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
I'd like to echo Carolyn's statement.
And I would like to echo both those. And, you know, some of these things are kind of a, every year we fund them and the YWCA is an organization that's had some real challenges the last few years. They've had a very nice capital campaign and going to do a lot of good things in that building. And I think the YW is one of the best-kept secrets we've gotten down to Waterloo, so that's why I'll support that.
Further comments? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries, the new motion carries. Thank you, counsel. There you go, Cindy, Tanya. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You know, we have, we have seven resolutions, ladies and gentlemen, and they are all the same. So we're just going to, I'm going to ask somebody to read all seven resolutions, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I think, I think I can do it.
Well, you can certainly give it a try. The old Irish try. You should. Mr. Morrissey? You have the floor.
I'd like to make, okay, I'd like to make motion to adopt the following resolutions. Resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement Number 14 HEZ-078 with Iowa Department of Economic Development and Hammond Hills Development LLC for the construction of eight new housing units generally located within Hammond Hills Sixth Edition and authorized mayor to execute said document. Nine, a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement Number 14 HEZ-079 with Iowa Department of Economic Development and Hammond Hills Development LLC for the construction of four new housing units generally located within Hammond Hills Sixth Edition and authorized mayor to execute said document. Number 10, a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement Number 14 HEZ-080 with Iowa Department of Economic Development and Hammond Hills Development LLC for the construction of four new housing units generally located within Hammond Hills Sixth Edition and authorized mayor to execute said document. Number 11, a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement Number 14 HEZ-081 with Iowa Department of Economic Development and Hammond Hills Development LLC for construction of four new housing units generally located within Hammond Hills Sixth Edition and authorized mayor to execute said document. Number 12, a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement Number 14 HEZ-082 with Iowa Department of Economic Development and Hammond Hills Development LLC for the construction of four new housing units generally located within Hammond Hills Sixth Edition and authorized mayor to execute said document. And number 13, a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement Number 14 HEZ-084 with Iowa Department of Economic Development and Hammond Hills Development LLC for the construction of 12 new housing units generally located within Hammond Hills Sixth Edition and authorized mayor to execute said document. And number 14, a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement Number 14 HEZ-085 with Iowa Department of Economic Development and Hammond Hills Development LLC for the construction of 12 new housing units generally located within Hammond Hills Sixth Edition and authorized mayor to execute all of the above said documents.
Second. The fine, Jerry. Mr. Morrissey. Councilman Morrissey. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding any of those seven? It's a roll call vote on all. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carried. Item number 15, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move that we receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance adding Section 7 Regulation of Roadside Memorials to Chapter 1 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Ways of Title 7 Public Ways and Property of the 2007 Code of Ordinances.
Second. Motion and second. Counsel, comments or concerns or questions? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Schmidt?
Can I ask who is going to be tasked with enforcing this ordinance?
It will be the code enforcement would be, have the main task. Code enforcement officers.
Can I ask, is code enforcement going to enforce this ordinance? Because I think we had an ordinance on the books that could have dealt with this and has not been enforced. So I guess I would like somebody to tell me that is going to change.
I will tell you that with this ordinance, Councilman Schmidt, that code enforcement will be charged with enforcing this and it will be enforced.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Welber? This goes out to the Building and Grounds Committee. I certainly support the decision that you made on this, but I'm not real happy with the wording of your, of your, of the ordinance. Anytime that you put the words can or may in ordinance, it weakens the ordinance. I think in a court of law, they'll have a field day on this one. I think it needs to be rewritten.
Mr. Mayor, can we hear from Mr. Zellerfer on that?
Mr. Zellerfer, do you have an opinion? Do you know this well enough to know what we've, what they're talking about here?
Dave Zellerfer, City Attorney. I'm reading it here as we, as we go. I helped Mr. Morrissey with the original draft. Was this Ron? Was this, which particular part are you talking about?
The, let's see, when you have, on the first paragraph, it says the, through the Police Department, code enforcement can remove the roadside memorial. And when you look at the last sentence of that, it says, if the roadside memorial has not been claimed within 60 days of period, day period, the city may dispose of the said roadside memorial. And then when you look in the very last sentence of the second paragraph, may is used as well. And I don't believe may can be used in an ordinance.
Well, it does, it can be. Yeah, you're wrong on that. It can be used. A lot of times people frown on it, but if something like this, when there's so many possibilities, it could be something as simple as a, if your favorite golf friend dies and somebody puts a golf ball and a golf tee in the ground or a golf tee, is it going to be, you know, held for 60 days and all those types of things? Or it could be a large cross with all sorts of other accoutrements on it. So what this does is it gives people a little bit of a benefit of the doubt. Now, we did discuss this when we, we had the word shell in there and that got shouted down. So the word may, just to give code enforcement and the police department, by the way, the police department has authority too, Mr. Schmidt. It's not just code enforcement. Vote your, you know, vote the way you want to on that, but it's not something that is set in concrete. Now, these are weird ordinances. They're difficult to enforce in some situations, as you can tell. Sometimes they aren't even enforced at all. My guess is it'll be just the large things that people can trip over or will get in the ways of lawn mowers or something like that. We'll wait because I'm sure the public can be very interested in these. Thank you.
Again, I will not support this until the wording is changed. Thanks, Mr. Welber. Counsel, does anyone else have, Mr. Morrissey, are you?
Mr. Mayor, well, one of the things that, being on the Building and Grounds Committee, and I didn't mention this last week, maybe I should have, but now's an appropriate time too, I believe, is that it's real, and I talked to Attorney Zellerfer about it as well and Dave Jones, is that when we're in a committee like this, especially Building and Grounds Committee, which I consider to be a pretty important committee, it's pretty difficult for anything to get done when you can't talk to one other person on the committee because when you do, you're in a quorum. So the only time that you can really meet and talk this over is in a public, when you announce it as a public meeting. And so getting this done took forever and quite frankly, I don't even know how we even got it done. But we ended up getting it done in this shape. But I think something needs to change so that you, so when you have a committee, committee members can talk to one another, at least on the phone, and discuss issues rather than having to worry about creating a quorum just because you're talking as a committee about what's in front of your committee to work on.
Which is another, which is another matter for another time in another body. We're not going to take that one up.
Okay.
Okay. Does any, counsel have any further comments regarding the roadside memorial issue at this time? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, we will vote on this for the second time next week. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It's time for oral presentation. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the mayor or the council regarding any matter of city business, please come forward, give us your name and address and please limit your, you know, I'm sorry, Jim, hang on just a second. I do have a request tonight from the public, from a Mr. Chris Schimpf who called in today and requested five minutes, and I need to recognize him first, Jim, I'm sorry. Chris, please go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening. You've still got to give your name and address, though.
Oh, Chris Schimpf, 2205 Randolph, Little Greenhouse, you can't miss it. First and foremost, I would like to thank you, Mayor Clark and Madam Chair, for replying to all my emails today and allowing me to have a little extra time in the period. I'd also like to thank the entire city council as well as all the department heads present at this time. I bring before you this evening what I consider to be some great news. Hopefully you will as well. Myself and some other citizens, some of who are present tonight here in the audience, we have expressed an interest in a new neighborhood association in what I would like to call the Liberty Park area. Obviously, that has not been voted on yet, so it's not official. The main idea behind this, I guess, is a little free marketing for it to get some new people involved. So we do understand that there is a process in place for the neighborhood associations and we plan to follow that process. I would like to thank Perry Goodman. He was very amicable in scheduling with me, sitting down, answering all of my questions. I really picked his brain for a while there. We have a very ambitious group. We actually plan to use social media as a form of communication to help out that way so we're not just going door-to-door with just the flyers. We're waiting for approval currently from a local church in regards to utilizing their facility. The area we are suggesting is, I don't know if we were able to get it up on the TVs.
I don't know. Can we marker it? There we go.
Okay. If you can kind of zoom in a little bit there, I'm not sure. We're kind of suggesting the Hawthorne Avenue area to the north, that'd be adjoining the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Association. I think that was Ron's old one. West 11th East touching the tip of the Hurst Neighborhood Association and the southern boundary being Ridgeway Avenue adjoining the Park Haven Neighborhood Association. The western boundary would be Baltimore Street, so kind of in that area. Again, those are not voted on and will be eventually. Some of the things we're hoping to accomplish, for one, we want to keep our children and our streets safe in that area, so we look forward to working hand-in-hand with, with the police department. We'd also like to establish a good working relationship with all city departments from the PD to the street department, finance, everything of that nature, as well as the mayor's office and the city council. And we'd also like to utilize avenues of communication for our neighborhood in order to make citizens aware of the various programs and services that are provided by the city, which I do not think many citizens are really aware of. We've had some very positive comment or contacts, I've had parents contact me inquiring if their children can receive community service hours for helping pass out the flyers. And in closing, I would like to note that if anyone that lives in that area wants to give me a call, if they want to put my number on file, that is 319-883-6472. So we look forward to having a great relationship with the city and if the city council or the mayor have any questions at the time, I would be happy to entertain those.
Chris, thank you very much. You know, there was a time when we were, we had all kinds of neighborhood associations across the city and they kind of have fallen off recently. Perry is in charge of our neighborhood association program and is doing a fabulous job and we are, are starting to get those back. And I think that's one of the many keys that, that we need to get more neighbors, more involved in their neighborhoods to address some of the issues that we're having. So God bless you for what you're doing.
We would like to extend and invite any of the council members that would like to attend the meeting or anything at that time, or Mr. Truckler or any of his officers.
Thank you, Chris. You will be hearing lots from us, of us and work closely with Perry and he will steer you down the right path. He's got lots of experience in this.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I want him to know that our neighborhood association is healthy and going.
Good.
So, and this is partly where this comes from. Statement you made last week, Buck, that we aren't broke, we're healthy, and we would like to have you chip in, since I think I'm the only one that's driving a neighborhood watch car anymore. Maybe you could chip in a little bit of money for the gas now that I am requested to drive Kimball Ridge at nighttime from Bob Greenwood and John Shatter, which I will do and to help them out, so. And my last statement is courtesy and professionalism. Last week at the finance committee, when Mr. Lynn asked a question, another councilman answered in a tone of voice that we brought up at the neighborhood association, speak. I wouldn't even talk to my dog like that. I think we ought to get some courtesy and, you know, back into how we talk to each other.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep, me again. 526 Home Park Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. The first thing I want to deal with tonight is what's going on in our community. And I alluded to this last week when I was here and I touched on the stop, search, seizure, or search app that you guys could pass. What's happening in this community, Dave, reflects all of us, every one of us. This is their direct reflection on our community. And we've got some derelicts out there that are bringing us down to our knees with their actions. The people over on the east side need some real help and obviously where it is on the west side are needs some help. And I know it's a bold step and I know it's an issue when you talk about this stop, search, seizure stuff, but I think you could do that and send a message to these people that we aren't going to put up with this stuff. Enough's enough. It could be any one of our grandchildren could have got hit instead of that four-year-old boy. Thank the good Lord he come out of that in good shape. But we got to stand up. And I think one way to deal with that is put a timeframe on it, put a six-month timeframe on it. Give our police department a tool to work with out there that's really effective and we know it's effective. Can it be abused? Yes, it can be abused. It could be the issues that are on the other side, but I think it's beyond that point. We could be driving down the street, any one of us, minding our own business and we that have pulled the trigger on a weapon know that a bullet doesn't discriminate. It can come through my car window and kill me just as quick as it can anybody else and any one of you at the same time if you're in the wrong place at the wrong time. Wonder if a few of these fools out here think they're playing games. But I think you need to take a bold step as a city and say, we're tired of it. Ain't going to happen no more. You're not dragging our city down into the gutter with your guns. So that's just a recommendation that I have and I think you ought to put it on your agenda and I think you ought to discuss it. Because I think we're at that point, look at last weekend again. Again, it made the first headlines of the news. Second thing is, there seems to be a problem here with why we do what we do on this side of this fence right here. And tonight, because I don't have enough time, I'm going to ask my duly-elected official, Mr. Schmidt, before this meeting is over with, I want you to read this. And I think this will clarify a lot of what's going on. I think there's some important things that you could take out of this as a council. And I'd like to thank publicly the Waterloo Courier for putting this in the paper.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
In the call to Courier this last week, there was an article in there, someone called in about the Young Ice Arena being closed from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock rather than being open. And the, the dollar figure was around $5,000. I would like to challenge you folks to find $5,000 to keep that open. I am down there on those hours, some of those hours, I can't walk quite that long. But I can tell you, there's people that come in with walkers. There are people that come in with canes. There are people that come in that have been chewed up by dogs and they're afraid to walk in the streets. And some of them are coming in and walking because when they leave, they have to go take care of grandkids. Some of them come in and walk before they go to work. There's a smaller crowd today than there is in the wintertime, but it is a lot of people from 6 to 8. You can find a half a million dollars for the TV station across the street. You can find millions of dollars, you can sell lots worth thousands of dollars for a buck. I would love to see you folks let me know in a couple weeks that, hey, we found $5,000 or whatever that dollar figure is to keep that open from 6 to 8. Could you do that? Report back to me?
I don't know, Forrest. I'll get back to you. Actually, I'd like to have Paul speak to it now, you know, and I'll start it with just a little bit of a, of a comment for us that, you know, we have these discussions every year at budget time and a lot of folks don't understand or don't believe us when we say that there are real consequences when we start trying to cut the budget, the general fund budget we're talking about, not the budget that we buy houses with or that we do economic development, the budget. We had a budget set and there were several people that worked on it. And actually, I wish Councilman Hart was here because he is the one that was trying to get to a figure, to a percentage, to a dollar amount to get the tax rate to. And he went to different department heads and asked different department heads, can you find $5,000? So he made the same request that you're making. Can you find $5,000? And he went to three or four of the larger departments and made that request. Paul?
Well, actually, yeah, Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, there are a number of departments who responded to that in order to try to balance a budget and move forward. This was something that we had looked at earlier in the budget process as a potential area to save some money. By opening a few hours later, you obviously have staff time, you also could have some changes in the utilities and so forth. Our staff felt it was a realistic and doable thing. I'm not going to argue with Forrest that no one will be impacted. And I respect your comments, Forrest, and, and I understand that some people will not be able to walk when they want to walk. We will, am I out of time?
No.
We will open early when we can open early. And one, the way I define that is if we have a rental, we've already got our covers, our expenses covered. So if the ice is rented, and we'll, we do a calendar every month and we'll list on that calendar what the walking hours are, both the paper and online. But that's how we arrived at this point. It's not a large sum of money, but we really didn't have much of any area to cut that we could identify that would have limited impact. And again, all due respect, it's an impact.
Yeah, and we knew that. Yeah, and we knew that, and we had the discussion when we were talking about passing the budget, that that $5,000 had been reduced, and where it had been reduced from was that Young Arena would not be open as early to walkers, and the council approved that budget. I think on the one hand, it's unfortunate for, there's no doubt about that for us, but it's also a very stark reminder that our general fund dollars are spread very, very thin. And when we cut general fund, the general fund budget, we are eliminating people or programs. I say that all the time, that that's what it's about. And this is an unfortunate and stark reminder that that is the case.
Okay, and I would like to add a little more. You cut me off about half of my three minutes.
I'm sorry, I was trying to answer.
And that's fine. I understand, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But I'll use the rest of my three minutes if I may.
Sure, please.
One of the reasons the general fund is so so small is you folks on this mayor and this council have created more tiffs than we've ever had in the history of Waterloo. And those tiffs are take it from, they take it from the residential property owner. This year, everybody in this town, everybody in this building, every business over, anyone who owned property other than the residential property owner saw benefits from this budget. We, the residential property owners, are paying all of that to all of you and all of those, and you're going to take away $5,000 from some of those folks. It's the only place and the only time they have to walk. And if you can't find $5,000, I think it's terrible.
Thanks.
Thank you, Forrest.
Well, this Dale Carroll, live at 130 Tribal Road in Waterloo, Iowa. Two questions I had. One was the status of the cleanout Saint Creek, if that was taken care of. And the other question, I have already got permission from the landowners for the whoever is going to come in and do the work to do it. But I was wondering also if if we have some, a lot of people in the neighborhood that would volunteer to, myself included, to cut some of the trees down that are interfering and get rid of that wood if that would help things out. And also, I am still trying to work on the county for their help with the 40% that's in the county. But if you could maybe answer how it's going.
Absolutely. Dale, the money is in the budget to be to be there after July 1st of 2016. I've talked to our engineering department. It is absolutely in in the program to get to soon after that. It will be done yet this year.
Fantastic.
And I don't know about if pre-cutting trees would help or hurt or have any effect one way or the other. That's something that maybe you could visit with the engineering department about, engineering office, or maybe we could find out from the contractor that gets that bid to see if that would help. I don't know if it would or not.
Yeah, I thought it maybe it'd help with some expenses. I don't personally burn wood, but we have some neighbors that use it to heat their house. We can get rid of the wood.
Sure.
I can get rid of the brush.
Sure.
If that would help things, but.
And I don't know if it would or not. You know, in some cases, they need to push those down and get the whole root ball out of there instead of just so. I don't know if it would or not, but we can certainly.
Yeah, I didn't know if it'd be easier to leave the tree hole and get the root ball or what. I guess I can talk to Mr. Forrest.
We'll check that out, and and we'll get with you, but we certainly appreciate the offer and know from the city side that that will happen yet this year.
Well, thank you. And we've also got some volunteers, and a construction company is going to give me some, give us some tile because there's one other restriction in the county between the Fish Lake, and that should be taken care of with volunteer help. So I want to thank everybody for everything they've done and put up with us.
Thank you very much, Dale.
Thank you.
You're easy to put up with. Just so you know, that Mr. Cammeyer's editorial that he presented, I'm not going to read the whole thing, it's rather lengthy, but it's from the March 20th, 2015 Waterloo Courier. It's the editorial that was on that date. Again, it's March 20th. The headline says, "Citizens' Input Can Help Shine Light on Government Dealings." Mr. Cammeyer, would encourage all of you to read that. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to me? I'm sorry? I'm not going to read the whole thing. No, sir. Yeah, Mr. Schmidt, would you like to read it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I'm sorry, I need to throw it.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. I thought you wanted me to share it with the council. Okay. Guess I am going to have to get out my glasses. This is by Rox Laird and Mike Hodges, co-chairs Iowa Newspaper Association Government Relations Committee. This is Sunshine Week, a week when many news organizations and First Amendment advocates will talk about open government. But this week is really about you, the people who are directly affected by the decisions of state and local government. You have a right to know how and why those decisions are made. You have a right to read government documents such as budgets, court files, and proposed legislation and ordinances. You have a right to attend meetings of government bodies from the Iowa Legislature to your local school board, county board of supervisors, and city council. That right in a democracy and an open society seems fairly obvious. Yet it was not until 1967 that the Iowa Legislature passed the Open Records Act and Open Meetings Act. Those two statutes start with the premise all government records and all meetings of public bodies are open to the public unless explicitly exempted. The unfortunate reality is the list of exemptions is growing. Opposing the proliferation of those exemptions is an annual priority in the legislature by the Iowa Newspaper Association Board of Directors and the Government Relations Committee of the INA's lobbyists. Those lobbying efforts are most effective when individual lawmakers hear from their local newspaper publishers and editors. But lawmakers should hear from citizens as well. The people who have the power of the ballot box are in the ideal position to get the attention of their legislative representatives. We also know from experience, the vast majority of public officials in Iowa understand the importance of open government and most sincerely want to do the right thing. There are exceptions, however, when those officials see the narrow interest of their jobs outweighing the broader public interest in openness. That is when it is important to enforce the letter of the records and meetings laws, even though it might make some people uncomfortable. Where does a citizen turn when he or she is shut out of a government meeting or denied access to public records? They can go to court, which can be costly, or file a complaint with the Iowa Public Information Board, which costs nothing. But the first and most effective remedy is for people who believe they are wrongly shut out of government to make themselves hurt. Stand up in the public meeting and challenge a proposal to go into closed session. Go to City Hall, County Courthouse, or the school district officer police station, ask for a public document, and if denied, appeal to an elected public official for help. The key is knowing your rights under the law. For help, you can turn to the Iowa Public Information Board or the Iowa Freedom of Information Council. And remember, you have a right to open government because the government belongs to all of us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to address mayor or council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walper.
Motion received and filed. Oral comments adjourned.
Second. All in favor? I propose or adjourned.